Human Services Committee meeting to order at 6:30. Members President, Councilman Waterman and myself.
I'll be your third, Michael.
And President Delicio. Thank you, sir. We have Dominique Pistone here. If you can come to the podium, please. She's for the Council on Human Rights.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Dominique Pistone and I live at 124 Linden Street, Apartment 2 in Attleboro. And I've been there for now going on four years. And I would very much like to serve on the Council for Human Rights. I am a school psychologist and have been one for over 20 years. I presently work at the Cranston School System. And one of the things I work on is having the kids learn how to get along. And, you know, learn about conflict resolution and how to talk and being respectful. And I know that may sound small, but I've also done the same kind of work in middle school and high school. I also worked on the TGI Council for Transgendered Human Rights in Rhode Island. So I've done some volunteer work before. And I just guess what I'm looking to do is to try to help promote understanding and and having people just like listen to each other, hear each other, and understand how important each member of the community is because there are some really wonderful people here. I found out about all of this through the public library, so just want to give you guys a quick shout out. What a jewel. I love the Attleboro Public Library. And I was listening to a queer story hour where they were doing a bunch of things there. And I met so many nice people, many of them from the Council on Human Rights. And because of that, they invited me to come by and I did. And I said, wow, you guys do great work. And I just liked their whole attitude, you know, on how they were working, a lot of camaraderie and shared goals. So just trying to make the city as great a place as it can be. So that's it in a nutshell.
Well, thank you very much. Your resume is obviously very impressive. And I think you're in the line of work that fits very well with the Council on Human Rights. So I think we'd be very lucky to have you. Any questions, Councilman Waterman? President Delicio?
I served before I became a city councillor. It seemed very important part of our city's government. And I don't think that's just any small thing, what you do to try to keep the kids from honoring one another.
Thank you, thank you. It's a lot. I think a lot of times the kids, especially post pandemic, haven't had a chance to be together and understand what that means and to listen to each other and just to talk. And a lot of my work sounds so basic because of people, we've all been blessed with families and talking and all, that they don't realize, no, 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 you gotta wait for the other person, you know, to hear their point of view and to understand that just because someone has a different point of view, that's okay too, you know? So that's the kind of work I do on a daily basis. But, and like I said, I've also, I've done it at a much, you know, high level with middle school and high school and students that have been in college as well. So my career's been pretty varied. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Councilor Sawyer, sorry.
Dominique, I think I met you at the story hour. I'm so excited that you are going to be part of the Council on Human Rights. I actually was the chair of the council for about five years, four years before I was on the council here. So congratulations and I'm sure you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. For the Docket of January 7th, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Dominique Pistone, 124 Linden Street, Department 2, to fill an expired term on the Council on Human Rights, term expired February 2027.
Second.
Thank you, President Delicio. Yeah, obviously, we just heard from Dominique. I think she's gonna be a great fit. We'd be lucky to have her. And any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. For the Docket of January 7th, 2025, entertain a motion to accept a generous donation to the Veterans Office in the amount totaling for $395 for a variety of gift cards from the Adderall Chapter Dodgers of the American Revolution.
Second.
Thank you, President Delicio. Again, the DAR, Dodgers of the American Revolution, just continue to keep coming through and helping out the Veterans Office and can't thank them enough for what they do. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. That's all for Personnel, Veterans, Human Services Committee. I call for a German at 6:35.
Second.
Thank you, President Delicio. All right, we are adjourned at 6:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Let's call this meeting the Municipal Council to order at 6:35. Please rise and join me for a salute to the flag. My pleasure, divisions, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I entertain a motion to approve the records of January 7th.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice of the first and only public hearing this evening?
Certainly. Continued public hearing regarding the requested amendments to Section 16-10 through 16-4 of the Revised Ordinances, Water Assessments, Rates, Connections, and Use. Full proposal available at the City Council Office.
Thank you. We're going to continue this public hearing until February 18th. The reason being, as we all know, what's going on with the water at this point, I want to make sure that we have enough time to have the new consultant onboard, understand exactly everything. It's going to be, no pun intended, drinking from a fire hose. It's going to be a lot to learn, as well as the Assistant Superintendent. So I just think give everyone time to get familiar with what's going on and we'll continue this until the 18th. So that's the only public hearing for this evening. And then we will now, I would entertain a motion to enter into Committee of the Whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are now entered into Committee of the Whole. If anyone has anything they'd like to bring in front of the council.
Good evening. My name is Ann Fanning. I live at Seven Oak Ridge Avenue. And I'm here-
Pam, why don't you get started? Just wanted to remind that due to the rules and procedures, we only have four minutes per speaker.
Yes, I'm very familiar. I watch this every week.
I know you do.
Yes.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm here tonight to talk about the traffic signal that came down near the CVS on North Main Street. It came down on October 11th. I didn't really know too much about it because I always thought the light was there. The light was put in 25 years ago. I was told when I talked to the mayor, because I did call her when it came down, that it would take until January to get the equipment to put it back up. I said, okay, it's not something you buy at Home Depot, so, you know, I understand that. Then I find out when you hear things that it may not be put back up. I think that's a problem. I was reading some of the people's comments on Facebook about it. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read a couple of them.
Sure.
Can't even cross the street as a pedestrian without almost being hit. Another one says, they need to put this one back up. It's dangerous over there now, no one stops. Another spot to try to avoid. I was trying to cross the street the other week in a crosswalk with a stroller and it was crazy. No one stopped. The light and the pedestrian button are necessary. Then somebody wrote, that was all different people. I'm at that CVS all the time and I need to take a left. And when I leave, I appreciated the light and I'm kind of ticked off that it's gone. Well, I am too. I called the collector's office to find out what they pay in taxes. The real estate taxes they pay are $33,784.13. But then they pay a personal property tax of $1,894.40. So they pay a total of over $35,000 a year in taxes, but yet there's no light there and it's a real problem. So I think I'm going to end and say, first of all, I don't want there to be an unfortunate accident there because it's crazy. And I don't want to know if it's going in, but when it's going in. That's basically all I have to say. Because it is a pain.
Do we have any questions, Ms. Fanning?
Sorry, thank you, President Fanning. And I apologize, I was there Saturday. I could have sworn that that light was back up. Maybe I was-
Really?
I guess I'm probably wrong.
No.
But-
Mike, it's the drugs you're taking for your knee.
Hate to say it, you're probably right.
Yeah, probably is.
Mr. Lloyd, thank you. Just two quick questions.
Yes.
When you mentioned the taxes, was that for CVS?
That was for CVS. So if they go out, they've closed over 200 stores in Massachusetts since 2017. They're planning on closing another 900 within the next couple of years. So I don't want that store to close.
Agreed. My second question was, if you could elaborate on who mentioned that it would not be going back up?
Um, I heard it around. Like I heard other things around too. I heard that one.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Thank you.
Erin Morrissey, 53 Dennis Street. I'm here about the parking lot on Rathburn Willard. I understand, even though it was promised it would be removed when the high school was done, that it's staying. It's a done deal, which is fine. But when the mayor brought it to the Conservation Committee, I was there and I explained that having an unattended parking lot will cause problems because there's a parking lot behind my house. And until the city put up barriers, traffic was going in and out of that lot at all hours of the night. So anyway, since then, people have started dumping trash in the back of the lot. I have pictures of all of this. There's a refrigerated truck there that's been there for almost a year now. I have pictures of that as well. The tags are expired, the license plate expired in '24. And most recently, there's another commercial vehicle with two trailers, one of which is, looks like it's designed to carry multiple cars to a car dealership. And that's been sitting in that lot for weeks. The city also just spent a lot of money plowing that lot in this last storm, which makes no sense because there's really no use for that lot at this point. So I know at one point, when the construction company was using it, there was a gate there so people could not just come in and out as they please. And I think that's needed because people are only going to realize more and more, oh, look, this guy's parking there, we can park there, can get rid of my trash there. So I really think something needs to be done just to stop the unobstructed access to that lot. So that's all right now. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the speaker? Erin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam, Erin, we have one question. I'm sorry. Yes, Councilor.
May I just ask, have you been in touch with any city officials about the illegal, apparently illegal parking or the illegal-
No, I wouldn't even know who to talk to. That's why I figured I would just come here. Like I said, I have pictures, so if you want to direct me to someone, you know, I can certainly email them.
Sure. If you don't mind just leaving your name, phone number, and email address with Virginia in the council office, you can go right around there and then we can reach out.
No, I was just going to ask the same thing. I was going to say if she could email all of that to Virginia and then Virginia could email all of us, that information would be great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak at Committee of the Whole? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to arise.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have now risen from Committee of the Whole. We will now go into reading of the mayor's communication.
January 21st, 2025, DM Municipal Council. To your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Scott Haran from the Traffic Study Commission. Please join me in thanking Mr. Haran for his service to the city.
It's an FYI.
I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Mark Fratato, regarding the following fiscal year 24 fiscal obligations that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 24 business cycle. Name of the vendor is Amplify and the amount is $2,500. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay this previous year's school bill totaling $2,500 as identified in Mr. Fratato's communication.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the receipt of $12,497 from the fiscal year 24 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant through the New Bedford Police Department and the U.S. Department of Justice. No match is required by the City of Attleboro and funds must be expended no later than September 30th, 2027. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve expending of such funds and any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Police Department.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need for overtime and detective overtime. The police department has experienced an increase in overtime this fiscal year due to the maintaining minimum staffing levels. Overtime was required to backfill patrol shifts due to several reasons, such as an officer being activated to full military duty, overtime budget cut, numerous student officers attending the police academy, and several officers having to fulfill the Required Field Training Officer, FTO, program upon graduation from the police academy. Moreover, there is a projection of a shortfall in the detective overtime account. This has been caused by an uptick in complex investigations, which take longer periods of time to investigate and also require additional follow-up investigative work. Also, our detective caseloads have been steadily increasing, which also increases the number of hours needed to investigate those crimes. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $192,000 from the undesignated fund balance free cash general government account to the following: $145,000 to the police overtime account, $47,000 to the police detective overtime account.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the need for funds to repair an issue with the HVAC system at the animal shelter building. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $1,830.93 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Animal Control HVAC Services Account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater, Thomas Hayes, regarding the need to replenish funds to Lights and Power because of an internal transfer made to professional services for an emergency repair in the Phase 3 landfill. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $144,181.61 from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earning accounts to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Lights and Power account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resource Director Lynn Daven regarding a memorandum of agreement between the City of Attleboro and the Public Employees Local Union Number 1144 Laborers Unit. The city and the laborers union were able to reach an agreement in regards to a grade increase for wastewater operators effective January 5th, 2025. Due to the difficulty in finding licensed wastewater operators, the city hired several operators in training who had little or no licensing or experience. The head operators, grade 42, assisted in the on-job training for the operators in training. As such, the city felt it appropriate to promote the head operators at grade 42 to senior head operators, grade 43. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body approve memorandum agreement between the City of Attleboro and the LIUNA, Public Employees Local Union Number 1144 Laborers Unit.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resource Director Lynn Daven regarding nonrepresented classification and compensation plan changes. The city would like to add the positions of Marketing and Events Coordinator and Shine Director to the nonrepresented classification and compensation plan. The city would like to add the positions of Marketing and Events Coordinator at ATS2. The city believes this position will play a critical role in the COA's ability to change the image of the COA and engage multiple generations of older adults. The city would also like to add the position of a Shine Director at SATS2. The Shine Director position was intentionally left off the plan due to uncertainty in funding. Since that time, the city is more comfortable with the funding. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to allow the addition of the Marketing and Events Coordinator and Shine Director positions to the Classification and Compensation Plan. plan.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes requesting funds to repair five cranes. The cranes are used to move heavy equipment and perform maintenance tasks. Therefore, I hereby, I hereby request your Honorable Body appropriate nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earnings account to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Professional Services Account.
DPW, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes requesting funds to purchase pots for the mechanical bar screen at Headworks. The bar screen was installed in two thousand four and is in need of a complete overhaul. In order for wastewater maintenance staff to perform the repairs, new pots must be purchased. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer forty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty cents from Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Plant Improvement Account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Veteran Service Director Ben Quell regarding the donation of five hundred dollars in gift cards to Stop &amp; Shop from the Sons of the American Legion Post Three Twelve. In accordance with Section One dash twelve of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your Honorable Body accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
Sincerely, Kathleen DeSimone, Mayor.
Thank you, I'll now go on to a reading of Clark's communication, please.
Clark's Communication, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. We have received the certificate of vote from the Planning Board from the meeting held on Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, stating that the Planning Board voted unanimously in favor to recommend that the Municipal Council approve the petition of Diane Rose to rezone property located at twelve ninety County Street, more specifically Assessors Platte Number one four eight, Assessor's Lot Number Four, from single residence D zoning to general residence C zoning.
Zoning Land Use and Sustainability, please.
We have received the certificate of vote from the Planning Board from the meeting held on Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, that the Planning Board voted in favor to recommend that the Municipal Council approve the petition of San Rose Realty Associates, LLP, to rezone property located on Curtis Ave, Rex Ave, and Washington Street. More specifically Assessors Platte Number eighteen, Assessors Lot Number five hundred U and five hundred V, from planned highway business zoning to general residence A zoning.
Zoning Land Use and Sustainability, please.
That concludes all the communications for this evening.
Thank you, I'll now go into committee report, beginning as always with Councilor Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee, from the docket of January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I move to approve expanding such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Uh, this is a non-matching grant.
Okay, additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tanyay Zeranez?
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Attleboro and LIUNA, Public Employees Local Union Number one one four four Laborers Unit, and further transfer three thousand dollars from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to the following: one thousand dollars to account Mayor Salary and Wages, two thousand dollars to account Health Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Holmes, motions in order, any comments?
Uh, this just represents a fifty cent raise across the board to the laborers union.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Waterman.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tanyay Zeranez?
Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, I move to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from account Water Enterprise Fund Salary and Wages in the following manner: four hundred thousand dollars to account Water Enterprise Fund Mansfield Water, and one he, one hundred thousand dollars to account Water Enterprise Fund Pawtucket Water, to provide funding for the cost of purchasing water.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Uh, we discussed it in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tanyay Zeranez?
Thank you, motion passes.
Uh, that's all the business for Public Works Committee, I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time. If I could, just give a little shout-out to everybody, DPW and everybody that participated in cleaning up after the storm, the, I, I feel like they did a great job. I, I woke up, my street was plowed, and the streets turned out good, so I know they worked really hard, and I spoke to Superintendent Tyler, and, uh, he was up for a solid twenty-four hours, so he was exhausted, so, from all of us, thank you, to everybody that had a part in it.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Councilor Holmes.
Thank you. Reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, I have one motion this evening, from the docket of January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. I move to appropriate sixty-one thousand from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Fund to account Fire Dispatch.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
We discussed it in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Waterman.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Tanyay Zeranez?
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, that concludes the business, and I'll call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Holmes, Councilor Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio, from the docket of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, move to approve the appointment of Dominique Pistoni, One Twenty-Fourth Industry, Department Two, to fill an expired term on the Council on Human Rights, term to expire February two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, sir, we just discussed.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the docket of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, move to accept a generous donation to the Veterans Office in the amount totaling three hundred and ninety-five dollars for a variety of gift cards in the Attleboro chapter to the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, sir.
True questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That's all for Personal Veterans Human Services Committee, call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Sawyer.
So zoning, land use, and sustainability committee does not have any items for tonight, and will have a, meet a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Waterman.
Reporting from the Transportation and Traffic Committee, from the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, entertain a motion to strike the following: to approve a no-parking sign at the entrance to Steeplechase Complex on the right side to cut back on the hazard of entering the complex.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Uh, so we already have a parking ordinance that says, uh, no person shall park a vehicle in any of the following places, this is Section ten dash five under parking. So, again, no parking in any street or highway within twenty feet of any intersecting way except alleys. That also is state law. I was advised by DPW Superintendent that we have the right to put up a no-parking sign as a city, twenty feet from the intersection.
Additional questions or comments? Seeing?
Just one, just basically, just, sorry, President Delicio, just to concur that, that is, that is correct, coming from Michael Tyler and stuff, so.
Good. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That concludes all the business of the Transportation and Traffic Committee, at six fifty-eight.
Councilor Holmes, can you call for a meeting for?
Sure. The Ordinance, Collections, and Legislative Matters Committee has no business this evening, but will call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we'll go to Councilor Foa.
On the Special Committee on Rules and Procedures, I have from the docket of January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, a motion to amend the Attleboro Rules of Procedures in seven dash one point twelve, to add Chair of Zoning, Land Use, and Sustainability Committee as a non-voting ex officio member. Second. Thank you. This is a motion which we began to discuss in committee last week. Since that time, we have received, I believe each of us has received from the Sustainability Committee, a memo, so, excuse me, a memo from the Chair of that committee, Mike Davis, explaining why they have requested this. It is a new committee, the Sustainability Committee, I think it felt a bit orphaned until we put it in its title, in the Land Use and Zoning Committee, and it, I think it is seeking to ensure that it has, it has a way of facilitating communications between, excuse me, between the council and the committee. No other committee has made this kind of request of us, this is a unanimous request of this committee, and I would endorse it. But are there any other questions and comments that people would like?
I'll take care of that, thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? I actually have one. So, first of all, I appreciate the passion as to which Mr. Davis has approached this, going from when it became an idea to where it is now. I appreciated the email he sent, I disagree with that, I think that as counselors, we have the right to step to, to support by showing up at any of these meetings, new committee, not a new committee, I think this committee overwhelmingly, this council has overwhelmingly supported this. To say that they're orphaned, I take great umbrage to, based on the fact that Mr. Davis sends the minutes to us every month, the fact that he's not shy about reaching out to us when there's something he needs. I think that when we're looking at adding a non-voting ex officio member, where do we draw the line? Where do we say that we don't need one for zoning, for planning, for land use? I understand traffic and transportation, that's a little bit different on its own, but I think with this one, I don't know what's to say that we need this for, for this committee, but we don't for the others, so, Councilor Holmes.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, I know we talked about this at great length, I agree with President Delicio on this, I also feel like if they are feeling like the administration needs to have a, a member attend, then that certainly could happen, such as what happens with zoning and planning, we could always ask the administration if they're willing to have a member also attend that, but I think it would, Council Tavares made a good point last week, he said it should be, all of them should be attended, or, or none, and I feel like this would become a full-time job. If you chaired zoning and land use and sustainability committee, you would have to attend all four of these as an ex officio member. We're allowed to attend any meeting, and we, and it's encouraged all the time, so I don't really see a reason to have a member of the council attend this, and so, for those reasons, I'm gonna be voting no. Thank you.
Councilor Foa and Councilor Sawyer.
Uh, thank you, I made comments last week, but I'll, I'll echo those, that I'm not in favor of this, and, uh, you know, over the last week, I just thought of a lot of the things that I decided through this committee, and, you know, when the license comes in for, you know, alcohol waiver, things like that, you know, I trust the Alcohol Commission will make the appropriate decision, and they'll send me what they feel is correct, and whether I choose to go to those or not, they, you know, send that in, and I make a decision based on that with, you know, my fellow committee members, so, I, again, I just don't see why this will be, should be any different, and I think that we should be able to trust the committee chair, who they appoint, to make the appropriate decisions and to, you know, get things out to us, and I think this committee alone is probably the one that does that best, it's the only one that I ever receive minutes on every time, so, now with that, I do not support this.
Okay. Councilor Sawyer.
Um, I think I have a question. He had mentioned that, um, having this ex officio member would bring, able to bring recommendations from the commission better to the council, is there, would those recommendations be able to come another way through just their email, or is it just, can it just be brought in because the, now the name of the, um, this committee is, has sustainability within it? Can we then just bring it in, even if there's not an ex officio member? So it's just my question to make, as a process.
Yeah, sure, so, it can be brought in the way any business is brought in, he can send an email to any single one of us, he can send an email through Virginia, it can come out to the council, where someone can introduce it in his new business, to Councilor Holmes' point, he can go to, through the administration, and it can come down to the mayor's communication, there's multiple avenues.
Okay, I guess I was just trying to see the, um, the process, if there wasn't an ex officio member, if, how it could happen. Thank you.
Councilor Foa.
Um, I don't have a position one way or the other on this particular motion, and perhaps the use of the word orphan was not an appropriate one, but it is a, a new committee, feeling its way, I think, in the city. It has made a unanimous request of us, nobody else, no other committee has made this request. I understand that you may or may not be able to distinguish this from other committees, but we can distinguish it from the fact that they've made this request of us, nobody else has. That's an important factor, I think, in considering the motion, so I would ask you to consider that request.
Sure, so thank you for that, what I would say to that is, I appreciate it, but, you know, we just at their behest added in sustainability to the end of the committee, 'cause they asked us of it, so say this passes, and then zoning asks us of it, well, now we have precedent, so I think that we have to take a look at everything as a whole, would be my thought initially. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
No.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
No.
Ms. Reynolds?
No.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Angelo?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Five, no, days?
Adam Clark?
Oh, I'm sorry, President Delicio?
That's all right, no.
Six days, four years.
Motion fails.
That completes the business of the Special Committee.
You should never forget ya.
That's all right. Thank you, Councilor Foa, we have no new business, one piece of old business, for which I will recognize Counselor Lavoy.
Uh, thank you, President Delicio. I entertain a motion to create Chapter Seven, Section three point five, to read as follows: The use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, known as SARS, and to also include of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides known as SARS, and to also include bromethothene are to be banned from use on all city-owned properties, to be banned both indoors and outdoors.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order, any comments?
Thank you. I put a summary here, but just to summarize the summary, this is something that I introduced with Rep. Hawkins, that's been going through the State House, it's gained a lot more support, but I feel as though this sends a good message to the state to get this out, and to be one of a select few cities to roll this out. And you know, the leading issue with these are, they poison birds of prey, owls, hawks, eagles, and the average hawk will eat, over its lifetime, around 10,000 to 30,000 rats, far more than any poison can keep up with. So everyone we kill via poison, we're actually making a worse problem for rats in the city. So I hope that you can support me in this, and I will follow up with that. Following this, I plan to petition for a home rule to the state to allow us to ban it citywide. Thank you.
Counselor Waterman, then Counselor Angelo.
I would presume it would also poison some other animals, for example squirrels. Do we know this?
Counselor Lavoy. So it would poison anything that would eat it. This was actually banned by the EPA for over-the-counter sales back in 2018 due to poisoning children, cats, and dogs. That doesn't exclude it today, if an outdoor cat were to eat a rat poison, that cat would too be poisoned, so based on the size, that varies in the amount of poison and the fatality of it, but even coyotes and foxes are often in wildlife rehabilitation centers, potentially fatal, and some fatal from this, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio. I love this measure.